Okay, I'll call this village board meeting for November 5th, 2018 to order please. Roll call.
Joe Zitzelberger.
Here.
Sue Springman.
Here.
Bill Ranham.
Here.
Chris Zellner.
Here.
Phil Wilhams.
Here.
Erin Moran.
Here.
And Sam Ballwig is excused tonight.
Okay, first we've got confirmation of open meeting compliance, Todd.
Village clerk provided me with the information related to the notices and postings, all of which were completed.
First item is consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled? Who I'd look for a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second by Joe Zitzelberger, second by Bill Ranham. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, as have it. Public comment, is there anyone here who would like to address the board on an issue that's not on the agenda for this evening? Todd?
I have one item sort of related to the agenda. The agenda that was posted in the paper included an item related to annexations of two properties, the school district properties and the Miller property in the town. Timing wise, we removed those so as not to impact the Millers polling place prior to the election. So just a little bit of a timing convenience for that property owner, for them and us, just to coordinate that. So the next board meeting is when we'll see those annexations back on the agenda.
Okay.
One other thing I want to mention, related to the plan commission coming up, you asked me to reference an item, and I'm blanking it while it was.
Okay, so I think the plan commission meeting is going to be canceled, and there had been a notice for the plan commission meeting, and then a notice in the newspaper for the next village board meeting for some zoning issues related to the potential development of the American Legion property sites. And the developer, from a timing perspective, has requested that those items not go forward in November, but rather in December. And so they won't be on in November, and then the public hearing notices related to zoning will be reposted for the December meetings, the plan commission, and then the village board meeting.
So no plan commission, or just not that on the agenda?
My understanding is the plan commission meeting's been canceled.
Canceled.
For November.
Anybody else? I'll just point out, November 30th is our village celebration for Light the Night. Alice Santa, he'll be coming down Main Street, and the whole community's invited for it. Should be another outstanding event that we're running with the chamber. Okay. Next we've got public comment on 2019 Village of Wannakee budget. So we're opening the public hearing.
Well, I think Renee's prepared to give you an update on changes since the last version that you saw, so.
Yeah.
She could do that first.
We put it on the agenda, just as kind of an extra time to get comment if we needed it, and to revisit some things. So I passed out a sheet that's called Budget Tax Levy Changes Since Last Presentation. Should have been at your places. So I just put together a summary of, since the October 15th meeting, when we did the initial presentation of the budget, what are some of the things that have changed, and kind of where we're sitting right now. So at that presentation, the tax levy in the budget was about 10 million, or yeah, 10,451,000. We've had a few reductions to the levy, and some additions, so that, you know, now at this meeting, it's about 10.5 for the tax levy. Let me just run through some of the reductions quickly, and then Todd might want to add to some of them as well. So we were able to reduce the levy because, as mentioned at that meeting by Cindy, we got some more county aid for the senior center. In reevaluating our payroll spreadsheet, we found that we had a retiree budgeted for the full year of 19 for receiving health and dental, but their sick bank will actually be depleting in February, so I was able to reduce the expense for that retiree. We, it was a couple changes to the stormwater. One was a reduction to the levy. We were able to reduce some of the external engineering for stormwater management. That was touched on by Kevin at the presentation on the 15th. Later I'll talk about what we had to add back in. And then we have pushed back the library maintenance supervisor start date back an additional month to July 1st. So those were all savings to what we need to levy. There was a few things that we've tentatively added right now. One is the Yahara Winds contribution. This is what we had to add back for stormwater management. We contribute, and they provided us with our amount for 2019. It's about 20,000. We've added a little to the legal budget, primarily because of all the open records requests that we had this year. We were feeling it was a little light. So we added a little bit there. We've tentatively put in the Safe Communities donation that we had the presentation at that meeting of.
I had a note on that. We did some, we got information from Safe Communities. Many communities like ours are contributing, number of them are contributing more than 1,500. Batch of them are contributing less. So we spoke with Chris about that, and he suggested this as an amount to consider.
Do you also want to talk about the parkland acquisition a little bit?
And this might, this could be an area of wiggle room for the board, but the village is in the midst, and sort of closing, final stages of negotiating a potential acquisition agreement with a number of agencies to pursue conservancy land slash open space parkland on the O'Malley property. It's about 80 acres out just south of Westbridge, between the county road and Westbridge, or the state highway, yes it is, no?
State highway.
State highway. And the organizations involved include stewardship monies, so more majority of this is grant money through state and federal agencies. But there's a local participation that is sought to support the overall grant program. The amount in here would be the requested portion from the village, which, again, as I've said, we're nearing sort of the final stages of this negotiation. I have it in here in our draft budget. Will we finalize this process by then? I'm not totally certain. They're willing to close in 2019, we know that. But by the public hearing, I'm not certain we'll have Ts crossed and Is dotted. But I'm suggesting we could potentially budget it here. At the same time, if you care to see savings on the bottom line, and reduction in levy, we could reduce that either entirely or proportionally, and use some money from fund balance if you care to. I guess I included it because we've got a pretty sound strategy right now to make use of fund balance in a number of different ways. Kind of, you know, sort of going back to the well over and over again, I guess just starts to worry me a little bit. So I think this might be a prudent action to actually levy for this purchase, being that it's coming together for closing in 2019. So that's why I suggested including it.
The next thing, we called it fire district contingency, but what this $9,751 is really the credit that they gave us for our 2019 assessment, because they had over-assessed us in the prior year. So we thought it might be beneficial to put something in the budget to make up that gap, so that next year when we budget, and when the assessment goes back to where it should have been, or increased, we don't have to make that up in the next budget cycle. So, again, it's a little bit of wiggle room on that one, too. But it just would likely help our 2020 budget, if we don't have to make up that additional gap for the credit.
It avoids the, call it a blip movement, a kind of budget going this way, then a quick jump in the year. It's more steady progress in budgeting.
And then we also put in a line item for payroll contingency, primarily because we're still in the negotiations with the police.
We're probably, we may be able to reach a settlement agreement prior to the hearing, but at this point, we can't be certain of that. So to address that, and ancillary impacts from settlement of the police bargaining process, we want to include that contingency here to be kind of heads up about it. We did include in the budget a 2% across the board increase for all staff, including police. But again, not knowing where that settlement is going to land, we wanted to be eyes wide open about it.
So that gets us down to that $10.5 million levy. The good news on that is that even though the levy is going up from what we presented on the 15th, we did have a favorable notification on our manufacturing assessment. So our assessed value actually is better than what I had predicted. I had, you know, done it really conservatively, because we had the 7% decrease last year. But it came in that we actually had an increase in the manufacturing, and certainly over what I had estimated. So our assessed value is actually 4% higher than it was last year. So what that means is even though we levied more, you'll see from the bottom line numbers next, that the tax rate and the tax bill increase actually went down. So on the 15th, we were showing a 3.61% increase in our assessed tax rate. We did have the decrease in our equalized, but that was going to mean a $25 increase per 100,000 of value on the tax bill. Now, you know, putting in these new inputs, we're down to a 3.31 increase in the assessed tax rate. The equalized still goes down, but then the tax bill increase per 100,000 is down to $23 per 100,000. So I guess, just wanting any other input before I put together the final presentation for the public hearing and adoption.
Is there anybody that'd like to have any comments from the audience in regards to this?
My only comment would be, Emily Wadowski, 103 Westport, it would be very helpful if these numbers were on a sheet that we could see as well. Just.
Any other comments? Okay, board members, any comments? Or questions for that matter?
I think I would just offer, the budget-making process is one that lays out a great deal of policy direction from the board to staff in the coming years. So it's one thing to talk about, you know, paperclips and supplies and stuff like that. It's another thing to talk about priorities that the public cares for the board to pursue. And that's what we laid out at the last meeting with the budget presentation from departments, what some of the core priorities that were being pursued. And I know the question from the board at the time was, or maybe it came from the public, I'm not sure, was if the only public hearing that's scheduled is on the day that approval is sought from the board, how is there an opportunity for the public to offer advice or suggestions on policies or priorities before you're asked to make a decision? Which is why we added this opportunity for additional public input. So I know numbers can be a lot to absorb, but I guess what I'm offering is an opportunity for the public to ask questions about policy and priorities, as opposed to specifically numbers. Because that can then be evaluated as we put together a budget proposal. With that said, I know what staff does, and the board does, all year long, is listens to feedback and tries to assemble that in our budget proposal. We just want to make sure we hit those expectations. So I just want to put a little extra context to what we're hoping, what we're hoping for, what we hope this provides an opportunity for, as well as in two weeks at the hearing.
And the notices did go in the paper. It's public, you know, the detailed budget is publicly available. It's also on our website, so it's out there, too, even if people don't want to comment tonight.
I have a question. I used to come to meetings and we'd have things on the screen. Is it gonna, is that meeting, are the numbers going to be up on the screen?
It'll be like the last meeting where there was a PowerPoint.
Okay, thank you.
So the main thing is we're just discussing the changes that you've got for tonight from last time, and then allowing people to speak from the last meeting that we had, where we went over the budget, and Renee did her presentation. Board members, do you have any comments or questions about any of the changes that were in here, with more specifics that you'd be interested in?
I'm glad we chose to pursue the Safe Communities thing.
So that's a number that, you know, we tried to stay, I think that was kind of a middle-of-the-road number, was that 1,500? There were some that were more. I think Madison was.
Bigger cities gave more, smaller cities gave less.
Yes. So if we believe that it's a good program, which I think it is, and I support it. Our police station, our police chief also supported it pretty heavily, seniors also. I think it makes sense for us to put that in there. Parkland acquisition, the 20,500, can you talk any more detail about that, or is that?
Did that go through Parks?
Well, there's been, this has been a couple years in the making, it feels like. We've been working with the town of Westport, the stewardship program. What is, where's Jim from? What's the name of the organization?
Heritage.
The Heritage?
Groundswell, no.
Yeah, no, yeah. Groundswell, no. Previously Heritage.
And they work to maximize grant dollars that are intended to preserve open spaces and afford opportunity for passive recreation programs, especially areas that are sensitive, environmentally sensitive, like the wet area, the oak savanna, that are components of that 83 or whatever acres. The acreage that is not included in the purchase proposal is, if you want to call it the high ground, the area to the, that borders.
Helen Brand Road, is that it?
Helen Brand Road. There's about acres on that.
Thirty.
Thirty-ish acres that are high and dry, if you want to call it that, that are not in this acquisition. It is purely these, the wetland, the lowland, the undevelopable space that's sought for protection through the program. And then it would become essentially a parkland of the villages. We would own it, and we'd have some responsibilities in maintaining it. But that's actually an upcoming meeting to discuss potential usage. Right, Sue?
Right. So it has gone through Parks?
I don't, have you discussed it at Parks?
Likely.
When we started the conversation, we did. So we do need to bring it back to them one more time.
At this point, it's just a holding spot in the budget for this potential. And you're right, they have a holding spot in case we move forward with this.
Although this is held, this is held included within the levy. We're suggesting a levy amount for it.
Right. So if it were excluded, what would be the levy difference based on?
20, 20,000.
But, no.
Right. It's a pretty small.
Oh, it is, I know.
Change. I don't know off the top of my head, just that 20,000? I could probably.
I'm not saying I would take it out. I'm just.
So 100,000 is about 1%.
Right, yeah, so.
So you can figure it's about two-tenths of a percent.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, roughly, yeah.
I just want to make sure it was vetted, because if there were ongoing maintenance costs, that we could handle it.
We started talking about that. We do, there's no immediate obligation of the village to pursue anything on the property besides owning it, although we'll have, we'll have to take on insurance, liability insurance obligations, and some other things that are typical with any land owned.
And you need to maintain it. I mean, there's wetland requirements, aren't there, in terms of certain things you have to do, or maybe not?
Well, I mean, if something major goes down in the creek, if a tree falls down and crosses the creek, I see us having.
I don't know. I just asked the question. Do we know?
So I think we've had a couple meetings about this, and if we choose to purchase, the money is here for it right now. If we choose not to, then that money would not get used for that purpose.
Or you can choose to reallocate it for another purpose mid-year, through a budget amendment.
Well, I've been in Wannakee since 1975, and I've never seen any maintenance out there.
That's absolutely correct. So, but that's something.
Maybe there's not. The question was, do we review that?
That's something that Parks Committee will be seeing more of, as well, as we go through this process.
Okay.
As well as, part of this land is currently in Westport.
It all is. It's all in Westport.
It's all in.
But it would all be coming into Wannakee at that point.
I think we have to work that out, because then we'd have to change our ordinance in terms of allowing for hunting.
It's hunting?
One of the components of the stewardship program is it has to be maintained and open to that use, although it currently is, well, isn't it trapping, essentially is the?
Hunting and trapping is something that has to be publicly allowed if we decide to move forward with this acquisition. Well, currently, it's in the town, so they would likely be able to hunt and trap on it now privately, just not publicly.
You've heard that a couple people have done some trapping in there.
So to make that point clear again, this is going to go back into Parks Committee. They're going to vet it, go through it before it comes back to us. All we're doing is being proactive to make sure that if it is agreed upon to do this, that the funding would be there, when needed.
Right. I just want to make sure it gets vetted properly, and that public has, you know, comment, period, et cetera. I understand it's what the land is, so.
And I don't, the payroll contingency, I don't know how much I can say about that, because we have negotiations going on with the union. But we have 2% budgeted currently for all employees, and we'll see where that negotiation comes in. And that should be taking place. We should find out something in the next week or two, or hopefully.
I think we might be able to hone in on a more solid contingency figure before the public hearing. And I would, I think what's included here is probably worst-case, well, it's very conservative. In other words, we'd expect the 50 to be reduced when we come to a settlement agreement.
So right now, with all those things figured in at the max that we would be spending, our increase would be 3.31% increase for this year, correct? Assuming everything is as is in here.
Right, as is tonight.
I don't think there's any unknowns that remain, right?
Not for, on the village's side. We don't have all the other taxing jurisdictions, but for our levy, I don't think there's any unknowns. We got the manufacturing much, much earlier than past years. So we could talk about that tonight.
Okay. Any other comments from the audience? Okay, do we need to make any motions or anything tonight, or no? Public hearing will be next meeting, correct?
Correct. Then there is still opportunity at that meeting for the board to make modifications if you care to, before approval.
Okay, thank you, Renee, for putting that together. It's been a lot of work as we've gone through this process to get the budget worked out. The public will have their opportunity again next meeting to weigh in as they see fit. All right, next we have license permits. Discuss and take action on operator license applications for Jorge, Savada, Eleanor, Ranny, and Jared Cole.
I'm glad you took the stab at the names. Thank you. The recommendation is to approve the operator license applications for these individuals, subject to successful completion of an approved responsible beverage server training course, and reviewed by the Wannakee Police Department.
Okay, do we have anybody that would be willing to make that motion?
I am making a motion. We approve the operator license for the three-mentioned individuals, subject to the successful completion of their approved responsible beverage server training course, and reviewed by the Wannakee Police Department.
That's what I said.
Okay, motion by Phil Wilhams.
Second.
Second by Erin Moran. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, as have it. New business, discuss and take action on resolution electing to have water utility direct bill, all public fire protection changes per Wisconsin statute. 196.03, subsection 3, subsection B.
Well, this came out as a component of the budget proposal, but it, I think its reasoning is more than budgetary. Renee, do you want to explain what we're doing and where we're at?
Yeah, so we talked about it at the last meeting, but currently, and Tim's here, too, to answer any real specific questions. But currently, our public fire protection is funded about two-thirds already on the utility bills, and then one-third we were paying through the tax levy. And so we were proposing to move that all to the utility bills. And so there is action that is needed, this resolution that's in the packet would need to be approved so that Tim can complete the application with the Public Service Commission to make this change and have that going forward.
I know, I might be jumping on something you're going to suggest. We've seen many communities, like ours, fully shift this cost to the utility bill. Not all of them, but many. And in fact, we understand another community, neighboring community, is considering doing the same thing at this point. So the notion that people looking to locate a community are seeing apples and apples when they review a community's tax bill, tax rate, is one that is challenged when some communities are sitting here with a sum, a portion, or none, of the public fire protection charge being placed on the bill. So we feel that this move puts us on par with most of our peer communities, in regards to how the practice of charging for public fire protection is done. And I think that, when we met with Chris, that drove his comfort level and confidence in making this change at this time.
And the Yahara Winds contribution, that's what this is part of, correct?
No, that's different. That's storm, stormwater management.
Okay. Then I have that question then. Are we going to be able to have this done before January 1st, or are we, do we have budgeted already for that first month?
So Tim is trying to get it expedited.
Yeah, we made a request. It has to be approved by the Public Service Commission. We made a request for an expedited approval. They have a number of steps they have to go through, and they technically can't start this until the resolution is presented to them. And they told us it was unlikely. They would do whatever they could, but they told us it was unlikely it would be approved by January 1st.
So my question is, if we're not going to be done by January 1st.
Will we have to put that into the budget?
Our thought was, for that, we would not put it in the budget, because we're unsure at this time. But we do have fund balance that we could use for that one-time, one-month, presumably, cost to make the payment to the utility, to make them whole for that month.
Okay.
I think our hope is that maybe they're offering us a worst-case scenario. And I, no, you don't want to.
That would be great. It simply is a, it's not a complicated calculation or anything. They just have to publish it, they have to have a hearing. There's a number of steps they have to take. And I, like Todd, hope it's not that long a process.
It could be done by January 1st. This is that shift we're taking.
But I'm confused. It says, this will decrease the general fund budget by 200. Is it in the budget now, or out of the budget, 200,000?
It's been out of the budget since the presentation on the 15th.
Totally out of the budget. That's why that statement was confusing. Okay.
Correct, and that's why I'm asking if we're not done by January 1st.
Then we have to add in whatever that amount is.
We have to make up that difference until it's approved. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that a contingency we should put in there?
No, because, well, you're stating that we have general fund, that we can take care of it.
Well, again, going back to the, keep going to the, keep going to that as a resource. We can budget it in as a contingency.
This particular change, we had thought of the fund balance before we started, you know, kind of the other sheet of other contingencies.
What would the amount be for one month?
$16,667.
Makes sense.
And 67.
Yeah, it's exactly, well, what's the, 200,000 divided by 12.
Well, what's the likelihood they would not approve it? Because then that would be a big dollar. I mean, have they ever not approved anything like this?
I think, I'm not an attorney, Brian is. I think it's highly unlikely that they would, that they would deny that. I think it's unlikely they would deny it, because they've approved it for some of the other communities.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because that's a big dollar number there.
We asked that, and I think Tim helped us make contact with the PSC early on, before we even recommended it, to find out whether there was going to be generally support through the process, and we felt confident there was.
I think it makes sense to do it this way, but I just wanted to make sure.
Is that a motion?
Yes. All right, move that we, where is it? Approved the resolution electing to have water utility direct bill, all fire protection charges.
Motion by Susan Springman.
Second.
Second by Phil Wilhams. Any other comments, questions? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, as have it.
Chris, before you jump ahead, can Renee and I get direction from the board as to whether you'd want us? Chris, before you jump ahead, can, can Renee and I get direction from the board as to whether you'd want us to actually budget as levy for that nineteen thousand six...
Sixteen, six, sixty-seven.
That contingency amount? Do you want to see that in what we present in two weeks?
Well, I want to know we can cover it, however, best to do it with keeping the tax levy as low as possible.
Right. Well, that's, that's what we're saying. If we take it from a general fund, we won't have our, we won't impact our tax levy right now. If we did, otherwise we're putting it as part of the tax levy, which will increase.
But this, again, is a better one to pay out of fund balance than some of the other contingencies, like the payroll contingencies or something. You wouldn't do that because those costs are on balance.
And our fund balance is above the percentage that we, our policy.
Significantly above, even with the spend down plan that we have, we still are above.
Right, so it could come from there. I'd rather do that than, I don't want to raise the levy anymore.
Leave it out.
Is that Joe? Any feeling one way or another?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Taking out general fund if we need to.
Okay, leave it out. Thanks, thanks for clarifying.
Okay. Next we've got discuss and take action on handbook changes related to health care. Adam?
Yep, um, so in the budget, um, we've been talking about these changes to our health insurance going to a health care savings account. Um, a part of that is employer contribution to those accounts. Um, in the budget, we have five thousand dollars for a family and for a single, we have twenty-five hundred dollars for a single. In a couple of changes to the handbook, one is a distribution of those funds. We're adding a distribution schedule, uh, to those. We're not going to, we're not planning on giving staff all of that all upfront all at once. Traditionally, we see with public employers, it's usually quarterly payments, um, that are made to those HSA accounts. So, uh, for the, my distribution schedule has it set up to boost the accounts in the beginning since this is new for staff. And so the first payment would be made January first and it would be for half the year to help staff kind of transition. And then from that point forward, Q three and Q four would be quarter payments in perpetuity from that point forward. So that's one change in the back of the handbook. The other is a change to how we fund our retiree HRAs, not HSAs, but HRAs. We are going to forward more of their leave, sick leave conversion to them to let them cover what would be, uh, help them cover their deductible if they choose to stay on our high deductible plan. We don't want to, we don't want to harm their benefit in any way, so we're forwarding them what would be the employer contribution out of their sick leave, um, banks. And then some other language changes, uh, for the flexible spending account, um, and that's about it.
If anyone has any questions for Adam?
What happens if, um, people leave early before the, that money has accrued to them?
Yeah, so I think the quarterly, the quarterly payments help in a sense that they, um, kind of help mitigate some of that in terms of if they leave early. That's why you don't want it, that's why you don't want to put it up there right on January first because hypothetically, if I were to give someone five thousand dollars on January first, January second comes and they say, see ya. I, I can't take that money back. And so, um, I think there's a little bit of, uh, a little bit more exposure on the front end for the village in a sense that I'm going to, I'm hoping to boost those accounts early on, but hopefully those quarterly payments on Q three and Q four and in perpetuity, um, help mitigate some of that stuff. I mean, sometimes I don't know if someone's going to leave.
Well, for sure.
Right, so, uh, I can't prorate it necessarily if I don't, if I don't know when they're leaving per se.
There can't be a payroll deduction in terms of pay for that expense.
Right, right, I, I don't think we could do that.
I'm pretty sure Al has said that there is no way to get it back once it's in their HSA account. And is that something we'll do every year or is this just a one-time thing because of the switch?
I would, I would think we would just do the boost at one, one time and then we would just do quarterly in, in perpetuity. So Q one, quarter, Q two, quarter, so on and so forth. Which is consistent with how, at least with what Al and our consultant says, that's consistent with what most public employers do. Some do, some do every, uh, not quarterly, but every third throughout the year. But quarterly seems to make sense trying to protect the village from that, someone who leaves.
Yeah, we can change that policy at any time in the future if we think it's running into trouble.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. Any other questions? Dr. Ran, any comments from you in regards to this or how this affects the medical world?
No, it's going to be, uh, it's going to take a lot of help getting that set up. There's going to be a lot of questions. Do you have enough people to do it then? I mean, enough people to help?
Yeah, I think so.
Mm-hmm. So, Tim, this was introduced at utilities. Adam was out to educate, um, all the employees. And you've been going out to all the different departments, yes?
Mm-hmm.
How has the general reception of the employees been?
Uh, my take on it is that employees are, um, I think there's some anxiety there about the shift in the health insurance. I don't think any other word, I think that's the right word to use. Uh, but we've invested a lot of time in trying to educate folks on what that change is going to be like and until people go through it and kind of see what it's, you know, like, I think that anxiety will continue to exist. But in terms of getting the word out and doing the education, um, and having conversations with staff, I think we've done a pretty good job of that, considering how much time we had from notice to get the word out and now open enrollment. It's been, it's been intense, but it's, I think it's been good.
So is your staff done? Any comments to you? I mean, you oversee them. Have they had any comments?
The information that, um, Adam has put out has been fabulous. He, um, had a video that everybody got, had an opportunity to watch on their own time. Then he came to our department, met with my whole team, did the same thing with all of the other teams throughout the village. So had an opportunity to view and learn, ask questions, follow up in person. I, I think my team is, is feeling like it's going to be a good change.
Jim, can you hear? From utilities, you echo?
Yeah, I think that I would echo what Sue said about Adam. Adam's done a really good job of getting out in front of our people. And, uh, if they haven't asked, it's because they haven't asked, it's not because they haven't had an opportunity to ask. I think the only, uh, the only feedback I had was that there was some hesitation about, obviously there's anxiety as Adam mentioned, but there was questions about, well, what's going to happen the next year after twenty nineteen? And, uh, I didn't have a answer there.
I wish I knew. So, you're going to be, as far as like the process, you, uh, there's some, I'm just, when we see it happen, it's, it's like, hey, somebody needs to do the first one or when they're paying in and everything, is there somebody going to be there? Are you the there or is it...
I'm the there. Becca and I are the there.
So, somebody who's totally familiar with it.
Yeah, and, and that needs to be the case because we're the ones who know. In this organization right now, I feel like Becca and I have some level of expertise to be able to help our folks through that first Q one, Q two, first year, honestly. And, uh, so we'll be the, the there.
And I would assume our brokerage, Al, would be there to help you as well.
Yes.
In the process.
Yeah, their, their staff has been, uh, incredible in terms of getting answers back to us and providing me with the resources I need so that I can help our teams understand what's going on and help them make the best choices. We have staff members that have unique situations and they've been able to help bridge that so that they can make the best choice for themselves. They've been really good.
Nope, I was going to touch on what you, what you mentioned. Actually, some of the, some of the greatest champions have been employees who have had this in prior employment in HSA or they have a spouse or friends in other organizations that have it and have either felt the benefits themselves or have seen positive outcomes for others. So some employees have taken it upon themselves to tell their own stories while Adam's been in these meetings, so.
So do, do we know of the people who will have large initial outlays that we will, that won't be covered initially by the quarterly?
So the, uh, policy, the, in the back with the distribution schedule does give Todd the authority to make changes on an individual basis for those staff members that I know, for instance, are going to have, are going to meet that deductible January tenth. And so we do have that planned in contingency for those folks.
I want to call it a hardship, hardship kind of case.
We have it, okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, then I'd look for a motion on the handbook changes.
I make a motion, we move to approve the changes to the personnel handbook as presented.
Okay, motion by Phil Wilhams, second by Bill Ranham. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, eyes have it. Next we've got discuss and take action on agreement for professional service with Ayers Associates for site investigation and environmental consulting at Wannakee Village Center.
I'll tag Tim and Sue on this one here. We'll bounce back and forth as needed, but, um, this is sort of, um, a not expected situation, but when you think about it, uh, not a surprising one, actually. The, uh, the, the sump crock in the Village Center, big, really big giant thing, what's the width of that thing?
Uh, six feet wide, eight feet deep.
So this is a big deal. But, uh, one of the things that, that, uh, puts water into it is the, the drainage tile system or that surrounds the foundation of the building that draws in groundwater and then whisks its way to the pipe that goes into the, the sump crock, which then sends it out into the, into the sanitary... The storm sewer system, thanks. There were some odors noticed by staff over the course of the past coup...
Year and a half.
Year and a half, petroleum-ish kind of. And we've identified the source of that actually being in, the water coming in from the, from the drain tile system, that, that pipe going in. The, we've tested, uh, out in an abundance of caution, uh, we've tested that water and we actually, uh, found levels of essentially broken down petroleum product, the, some of the elements that are outcomes of petroleum as it breaks down, that, uh, were of levels within that water that required reporting to the DNR, which we've done. The, so the not, the not surprised part relates to what we know about the site before it was the Village Center. That, actually underneath the building is where we used to have the spot where people brought their motor oil and stuff, citizens, and dumped it into a big tank and then it got taken away somewhere. Obviously, some, some found its way onto the ground beneath that area and we learned that when we excavated for the Village Center. As they were digging, uh, the dirt smelled of petroleum product. It was reported, um, excavation was done, uh, to the satisfaction of the DNR at the time and we received a clean letter back ten, ten-plus years ago. Over the time, the ten-year span, the thing that you can sort of imagine in your head is that, um, as all the dirt around that area and the construction of the building has perhaps changed patterns of, of, uh, of surface water and groundwater movement, that, that is essentially, you could say, has finally kind of reached the, we believe, has sort of kindly finally reached the drain tile system, bringing it then into the crock and, and, uh, now we get to deal with it. The next step, knowing what we know, the next step is to, uh, really become certain about the lo, the location and the sources, which is going to require some work, along with some additional testing afterwards. I believe there's some test wells that have to be completed. This isn't, this isn't optional work. This is work knowing what we know about the water coming in, we need, we need to address it. So we have a proposal from Ayers, uh, for nineteen thousand, four hundred dollars. We do not budget for this, but we do have, uh, sort of an, uh, the advantage of this being within a TIF district. And we identified in the project plan for the district that environmental, uh, addressing environmental contamination, uh, testing and remediation is an approved project for use of the funds. And we actually have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe. In excess of a hundred thousand dollars is in the TIF balance that is, uh, undesignedated for any other use. So, that would be the funding source for the study. We can't say yet what the, what the repair will be when we complete the study. We've talked very briefly with Ayers about some of the potential solutions, which might involve like actually scrubbing, cleaning, uh, through like carbon filtration, the water that comes in through the, um, through the, uh, through the storm, uh, the groundwater system, the tile system before it enters the crock. And the engineer didn't necessarily make a weird face at that as a solution. He said it's not unusual, it's not dramatically complicated. But we don't know anymore besides that, that detail at this point. So, what we're seeking is approval from the Village Board, uh, to use TIF funding in that TIF district for, uh, funding the agreement with Ayers and Associates at an amount of nineteen thousand, four hundred to pursue the testing and, um, data analysis. And what did I miss?
That was pretty good. You were listening.
I have been.
So Sue actually brought this up to me some time ago too, that there was a smell odor that was in the bottom of the Village Center and she was going to investigate it and then Todd came to me and said there was petroleum in that water and I thought maybe we struck it rich. Kidding, of course, though, that, that, uh, so it's absolutely something that we need to do. Make the motion to approve the funding through our TIF.
Second.
See, so I made the motion second by Susan Springman. Any other comments?
Yeah, I've got a, on page eighty-two, there's sort of a calendar project plan. Looks like it's starting in October. Is that still accurate or...
It's not. They presented that proposal before they were aware of our Village Board reading schedule and so things need to just be pushed back a little bit.
But they'll get it done as soon as possible, so.
Yeah, they're, they, um, actually the people from Ayers were already doing some preliminary, lining up subcontractors, waiting for our approval tonight. So we'll call them tomorrow and get a schedule going.
And do we think this affects the drinking water in the...
Not at all.
Or anyone, I would think residents might be concerned in the area.
Not at all.
Okay, that's probably important to know.
And the other probably important to know is that the moment we identified the source of this odor that was noticed, we added in a venting system to the crock that it take, takes that odor out of. There's no concentration of that odor in the building now.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, eyes have it. Next under orders is we have discuss and take action on Forward Development Group requests for TIF participation in Woodland Crest development. Are we going in open session to start with and then, or going to closed session right away?
Well, I think the only thing to note in open session is that, um, we have a revised proposal from Forward Development Group that they've presented and staff have reviewed and we're prepared to, um, present that, uh, to the board in closed session to talk about what a negotiated, potential negotiated agreement could look like and we want to review that with you. The, the FDG is here, um, and if, I suppose if you care, if they care to offer any comments, it's, it'd probably be fine if, if that's, if that's something I'd like to do.
Would you guys care to share anything in public?
We'll, we'll just say good evening, um, Dan, Dan O'Callaghan, appearing on behalf of Forward Development Group. Uh, we are still very excited about this project. Uh, it's a very complex project to put together. Uh, so we've been working very hard with village staff to try to find the right balance of, uh, project cost and also benefit to the community. So we've got a new proposal and, uh, we hope you look upon it favorably.
As a reminder to the public, this is the project that involves the, the Hy-Vee grocery and convenience store.
Okay. So the Village Board may convene in closed sessions authorized by Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The Village Board may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. So I'd need a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Motion by Phil Wilhams, second by Bill Ranham. Roll call vote, Todd?
Erin Moran?
Yes.
Phil Wilhams?
Yes.
Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Bill Ranham?
Yes.
Sue Springman?
Yes.
Joe Zitzelsberger?
Yes.
Carries six to zero.